I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Very efficient, correction, will be agenda? How many can you add?
I can be quick.
No, we can add you to the agenda or you can do public comment.
Appreciate if I was on the agenda, can I engage with the public?
Yeah. Okay, so let's just put it at the top about the side department.
About public comment?
No, none of this is. Any other changes? Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
That's work. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Public comment, does anybody have anything I'd like to say? Yes. You're twenty minutes later, isn't it enough?
More brush. I want to personally and publicly thank this Caledonia Township Board for opening this hall, providing the water, food, and the warmth and the ability for everyone to charge their stuff. Very few townships in this area have done this. Couple in Alpena County, like here in Caledonia Township, seeing there's food out here this evening. I think this board deserves a good round of applause for.
Thank you. You have to remember, this hall belongs to everybody.
That's right. That's all I had to say for public comment.
And I'm gonna write down somewhere that Jim fought very sharp feet.
At the other soon.
Can you cry?
Yeah, wait till he dies.
It's all progress. Any other public comment? Okay, any other public comments? Okay, I got a lot I want to say. Thank you to everybody that came up, I know you're not here, but I hope you're funny, I would very much appreciate everything that the people did, the food that was donated, the help we received, keep the hall open and keep everybody fed and warm, it was amazing. Great from day one to most of our bread and the oven. A lot of people stepped forward with food and helping me and the items. We even had fresh cereal, syrup, we had all.
Burger.
Yep.
Burger donuts.
Oh yes.
Lots of food, they kept watching me.
Yep, a lot of people donated and it was wonderful. This board was fantastic, they were all up here. They came in handy, carrying out pots, really cooked every day, all day. She did a great job on the dishes, but she helped cook too. And I just really appreciate everything and everything you have done as your community. I will add that if anybody doubts the heart of this board, they don't have to doubt the heart. Our big dock at the north end is being repaired. So as soon as we get it, we'll get it back in the water, but I just want everybody, please be patient. If we don't get it fixed before we put it back in, we may have the lakes break out in the water and it will be a good event. Also, I spoke with the county forester because they didn't get a chance to get the trees down before they go in. Because of the oak, he said it's okay, but that's just a suggestion. But since we're grinding out the stumps and everything, he feels we're safe to do it when we need to do it. I talked to him today and I would like to get it done before we start going fishing and boat. I received an email this morning from the Hubbard Lake Community Association, or yesterday actually, I read it this morning, from the Hubbard Lake Community Association. And in short, they are no longer looking to the township to cover a portion of the library lease. We're gonna be in court next week for a hearing on a life issue. It has been ongoing in our township for many, many years. We have an ordinance enforcer and we have a life ordinance. When our ordinance enforcer receives a complaint, they have to sign, but then he has to do his job and enforce the ordinances that our township has in place. This has been annoying for a couple of years. Nobody on this board likes what's happening, but it's happening because we have an ordinance and it's our job. We have tried, I know the ordinance enforcer has tried and tried and tried to work with this person. I know citizens that have volunteered to take their equipment in there and help me clean them. He has refused help. As a legal representative for this township, I am involved in that capacity. This is no fault of any board member, it is not fault of our ordinance enforcer. So if you hear anything and you feel it's not true, or you want to know the truth, or you want to know if you heard correctly, please contact one of us. Because the threats and mistruth about some of us are not helping the situation at all.
So we have our election waiting, obviously just a few minutes to go, but just reporting that where we're at with the elections, we've received seventy-two of two-hundred-and-six ballots that, those are absentee ballots, those are absentee yes. Those are the people on that permanent list or the A D list that requested them. Twenty-three have been returned so far as undeliverable or temporarily void.
So they post not to pose a report?
No, we will not forward an application, we will not forward a ballot. So those always come back to, I mark them as undeliverable, so if they show up on election day, they can still get one, they won't have one to surrender. But if you're one of those twenty-three, you need to call me so I can get your address so I know where to send it to you. Because that's how those ballots work is the delivery system always approved on. So, yeah. So twenty-three returned. We have a lot of silver.
Okay, have you all reviewed the minutes from last meeting? Anybody have any questions or corrections? I hope you're taking motions to approve the minutes as presented by the board. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Katie, as a pleasure, do you have anything to add?
I have, I have not done it yet.
Okay.
I have a name, I don't know.
Well, if I just scatter this right now, yeah. Jim, so take that light.
She can.
He's on the other one.
Well, I would like to speak a little bit about one of our Civil War veterans we have interred in Pleasantville. Old Bill Spoon, William Spoon Private. He's in Lot Twelve of the original section. He enlisted on the fifteenth of August eighteen sixty-two in Company I of the One Thirtyth New York Volunteer Infantry Regiment. Mustered in on the thirtieth September eighteen sixty-two. That infantry regiment was converted to a cavalry regiment on the twentieth of July eighteen sixty-three and was designated as the Nineteenth New York Volunteer Cavalry Regiment on August the eleventh eighteen sixty-three. And was officially re-designated as the First New York Dragoons on the tenth of September eighteen sixty-three. So now here's Private William A. Spoon, Company I, First New York Dragoons Regiment. Now listen. This regiment has the distinction of being the only, has the distinction of being the only Union Army Volunteer Regiment that was converted entirely from infantry to cavalry during the Civil War. The only one. Now I know you're all wondering, what is a dragoon? Well, the term dragoon generally refers to a mounted infantry or like cavalry. Mounted infantry or like cavalry. Now the dragoons were an auxiliary arm of supporting the infantry. While they were not expected to make long marches on foot, it was necessary at times for them to hold a position dismounted until the infantry could arrive to secure a position. The typical distance covered by soldiers on the march varied based on the urgency and the goals of the mission. Historians estimate that on average soldiers would march ten to fifteen miles a day. Of course impacting that distance was the terrain, the roads, and the weather. Now while cavalry regiments did most of their fighting on horseback, the dragoons, just like the First New York Dragoons, on the other hand, did most of their fighting dismounted. Their horses provided them with the mobility, but for the most part, they dismounted when they were fighting. Using their Spencer carbines, their headkill, their scrape kill rifles. They were also armed with sabers and Colt Dragoon revolvers and thus were trained to fight both mounted and dismounted. When they were dismounted, one soldier was responsible for securing four horses. Allowing the other three dismounted soldiers to engage the enemy with an assortment of weapons. I have a visual wave here. This is the battle flag of the First New York Dragoons. This is what they carried in the battle. This is the original. On the background on this, on the original flag, there's a lot of writing. What they did, they contained places of all the different battles. They would dedicate, they're all over this flag.
I didn't mean you were done, I meant thank you for sharing the flag. I would never assume.
Now during its service of the First New York Dragoons, they fought in sixty-four battles. You can see that's a thirty-two by thirty-two and a half inch flag. Sixty-four battles, there's a lot of writing on that flag. Anyway, in sixty-four battles, they had captured nineteen pieces of artillery. And they captured four Confederate flags. They lost four officers. One hundred and twenty-seven enlisted men were killed. One officer and a hundred and forty-two enlisted men died of disease. And thirty-six enlisted men were captured and died in Confederate prisons. Now after the First New York Dragoons marched in the grand reveal in Washington DC on the twenty-third of May eighteen sixty-five, the soldiers included Private William A. Spoon, they were all mustered out of service on the thirtieth of June eighteen sixty-five at Clouse Mills, Virginia. And it was up to each one of them individuals to find their way back home. Now of those thirty-six enlisted men who died in Confederate prisons, one of them was Private William A. Spoon's older brother. Private George A. Spoon. He was captured at the Battle of Todds Tavern, Virginia on the seventh of May eighteen sixty-four. He was sent to the Lydney Prison in Richmond, Virginia, then to the Andersonville Prison in Georgia, and then he may have been sent to the Florence Confederate Stockade in Florence, South Carolina. He died either at Andersonville or Florence. Both of these national cemetery sites show that he may have died either one of them and is interred there with no grave marker. The reason for that is a lot of these early soldiers, early into their capture and incarceration, they were thrown in a trench and then they were buried, their names are lost forever. I just wanted to pass that information. Right up here, Lot Twelve, Private Spoon. So when you drive in there on the north driveway, right at the end of the road before it makes the first turn toward our smaller old flag, right on that corner lot, where Old Bill Spoon is. So stop and, hey Bill, thank you for your service. Okay, just a few little things. April the ninth tomorrow is National Former Prisoner of War Recognition Day. And before our next meeting, Sunday, April fifth, is the first of five of our National Days of Mourning. And it's National Fallen Firefighters Day. All flags go to half staff sunrise to sunset, May fifth. Thursday on May eighth, which is before our next meeting, so everybody knows, is the eightieth anniversary of V E Day, E E Day. Victory in Europe. It's really celebrated more in the United Kingdom. We do celebrate it here in the United States as well. And what is V E Day? It's when Nazi Germany unconditionally surrendered to the Allied forces during World War Two. And this is just one of the observances in May, which May is National Military Appreciation Month. Just wanted to pass all that wonderful information on to everyone.
In our cemetery, we have a adopt a grave program where you can adopt a grave and you take care of it. And who's yours?
Bill Spoon.
Also, I believe, I'm looking at the last Saturday in April as a grave cemetery and I want to talk to you versus picking up day of Pleasantville. Last Saturday, I think it's the twenty-sixth. Okay?
We have a lot of reactions.
Well, Nick's gonna be out there shortly, yeah. He was in emergency, so I talked to Nick again today, he asked me about where to put the chips and stuff.
There's some reactions on that, so.
Yeah. But I figured Nick can get the worst of it, he won't be shocking today. And I'll let you know when I know that Nick is going out there, so you can go up and check on him. Yes, we gotta have a supervisor.
And also I have an active emergency at three-three-nine, what's super?
No, it's bad. Your treaties are a lot shorter now. Okay. Damn.
Do you like me to go to the, yep, I can do that.
Then I know the offer, Jim.
So I will say, this is one of the most unique township meetings I've. Does that matter? Yeah. So, one of the more unique township meetings that I attend and I really appreciate historical perspective as a former social studies teacher. My wife is a social studies teacher too, that perspective I bring. So there's an incredible amount of history, you know, here in our county. So I won't go into the weeds on all that stuff, but my name is Daniel Guyer, I'm the superintendent at Alcona Community Schools. I know that Caledonia is a vast township, you know, that incorporates a lot of people that may not be from here or have kind of relocated, you know, to this area. So may not have a connection to the school or grandchildren or whatever, you know, happening. But we do have a neat little school here in our community. If you have not engaged with, you know, with that district, we are very actively engaged in upper learning and trying to get students to have hands on learning experiences. Not fair to probably embarrass the Rochester Hills or anything like that of like little things like, you know, what the last two weeks abroad, we've had a little bit of a partnership with Caledonia on trying to offer showers or morning stations and, you know, we're a community school. That's like literally in our name, you know, and we're not perfecting. We're doing everything we can to keep moving forward, but we do have two valid renewals, which is why I'm here on May sixth. One renewal is our eighteen mills, which is something that every district's charged with in the entire state of Michigan. So this is not unique to Alcona schools or Alpena or wherever you may want to look. The eighteen mills is a renewal and it's something that funds approximately sixty to seventy percent of our operating fund. We have a ten million dollar budget, you know, in our district for about seven hundred students. We have ninety percent of that is people. We're employing humans, no matter what the role that they happen to be on. So the eighteen mills is vital for us to keep the doors open pretty much at this point. You know, it is very unpopular, I'm hearing, in a lot of capacities that this is a special election. And I understand that. Kind of giving a brief history lesson, in two thousand and fifteen, when eighteen mills and the sinking fund, which is the second item on the ballot, was established, that was a special election too. I'm learning a lot of history on odd election years versus even election years. So two thousand and fifteen is an odd election year. I was not in the role that I'm in right now, a special election. Two thousand and twenty, I was a year and a half into my role as superintendent and wandering around trying to communicate renewals at that point for the sinking fund, eighteen mills, and the heart of COVID. And so that was, there were lots of things on the ballot because it was an even year. And here we are five years after that, back to an odd year. And, you know, people, I have a great deal of apathy for the township clerks that are having to carry out the burden of holding the special election. And I can't put the genie back in the bottle on that one at this point, you know, we are where we are. But I want to really try to separate like eighteen mills and sinking fund, which are the two renewals, renewals that we have on the ballot are very different than a new initiative. And so I was here a year and a half ago, eighteen months or so, talking to you about a bond, if you happen to be here. This is a one hundred percent different thing than that. And the bond was an idea of some things we wanted to improve. We saw voter feedback, the voters spoke at that point, and that was turned down. This is a completely different issue. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the eighteen mills, which is up for renewal as well as the sinking fund are things that have been voted on in fifteen, twenty, and then hopefully twenty, thirty-five. What I can say is that based off the concerns that I'm getting about special election costs and things like that, which the district will have to pay, and I understand that, is that we, and two thousand and thirty, whatever that may be, we will either do a four-year or a six-year renewal at that point. It will not be an odd year renewal at that point, there will never be a special election cost in the future. This is my first renewal attempt as a superintendent and I'm here, so we are, again, I guess we'll do, I can't put the genie back in the bottle. We are operating a past precedent, so there are concerns about that, but I understand that, but we also have to have these two things to be able to do. It is, we are where we are. So I am happy to answer any questions. All I can ask from the community is to ask those questions and speak to me, talk through them. We are doing forty-five meetings over the course of twenty-five days or so, so this is my fourth one today. And happy to try to answer those questions and try to, you know, work our way through this, but probably the two things I'll leave you with is again, that eighteen mills, oh, wait, we'll leave that, I believe, but eighteen, both of these renewals are, and I gotta make sure everybody understands that these are not new faces. This is a very challenging climate right now to attempt to have a renewal and/or. This is a very challenging climate right now to attempt to have a renewal and/or new tax as well. There are lots of fiscally conservative responses right now nationally, which is okay. And that, you know, this is not a political issue as far as that concerned. This is, we're an operated school. We're gonna try to fix what we have. So you have these two renewals up, 18 mils, keeping the doors open, sinking fund, trying to fix some things we have. Just gotta give you perspective right now. So the sinking fund at one mil generally raises about a half a million dollars or so a year to be able to help us kind of fix things. We are gonna replace and repurpose the middle high school parking lot this summer, which if you were to take a drive through the circle drive, it's not great. $610,000 to replace probably 25% of our entire parking structure. So it, you know, costs are high. I'm not asking for sympathy. I'm asking for confidence and trying to keep things going for our students. So, again, very different than the bond, you know, that was 18 months ago. This is a renewal at this point. And, you know, if there are frustrations about the special election and the burden that that puts on the township, you know, in different places, I would ask very respectfully and politely to take that out on me and not the kids. So, you know, if you have concerns about that, you know, on behalf of this stuff of meeting, I joke that I'm gonna set up like a gold-plated plaque in my office saying, "In 2029, whatever you do, what you plan for 2030, do not do an odd year election." And I've been, I'm serious but joking about that at the same time, like, you know, that would be something that we will do in the future. I've had people ask me that, like, "Why did you do this?" And I'm like, "Well, this was a pass practice. Right, wrong, or different?" I'm learning to, I'm not happy to spend district funds on all the stuff, you know, like this, but we will come up with a plan to make sure that this doesn't happen moving forward, whether or not I'm with private school cemetery at that point or not. But I, you know, I can't deny that about that, that, you know, this wasn't part of the long-term plan. There's no like ulterior motive here. You know, we are just trying to pass the two renewals, fix what we have and keep moving what we have right now. And just hopeful that the community can separate those two issues any.
You know, so just to reiterate for anyone who might wonder, we know, as you know, that these villages can only be used for the purpose stated. So that money, if you vote this, isn't gonna be redirected somewhere else. It's got to go towards what it states. So if that's a concern for anybody, they can, you know, I'm concerned.
And, and just so, again, and I'm asking, the best way above all this is to communicate with others. Sinking fund is vital because it cannot, that's not a wage allowable option. Like it literally has to be something that you can fix and you can't move. So like even like something simple, lockers are not allowed in sinking fund because you can move that, sell it. So there are very, you know, the consequences for misspending a sinking fund is the fact that you can never ask for a sinking fund renewal ever again. So we take that very seriously. It is guts and infrastructure at this point. We've got a 1957 guts part of the building, a late 70s guts part of the building, and then early, you know, 2000s. So, you know, we're not navigating state-of-the-art facilities at this point. We're just trying to keep up with what we have at this point. So, but, you know, in order for this to be accurately communicated out to the public, I'm asking the community to make sure that you would talk to the library and, you know, and make sure that they understand what's on the ballot because there's no spoken ears here. Like, you know, it is what it is and, you know, I'm as, probably as transparent as I am. So if you have questions or you want to talk about things, I'm happy to answer those questions and or, you know, take care of those. So it's, you know, it's about the kids at this point and it's not Dan O'Connor's village at this point. It's our community's village and trying to maintain funding for our school and our students to help them move forward. So, that's.
Are these gonna be absentee ballots? Are these gonna be mailed to our house or do we have to go to the?
That would be a question. So are you, you have my permanent ballot list?
Yes, for absentee.
Or, well, there's definitely a sound, because there was a new law that came in. So we had absentees and I would send you a letter saying, "Do you want a ballot?" And then there became a permanent list. So if you mark the box saying, "Send me a ballot every election, don't send me the paper," I automatically can send you a ballot.
When should I look for that in the mail?
They were sent out weeks ago. Were you able to go and return? Come see me afterwards. I'll look at my parents.
I just got here, so maybe I, maybe I didn't do it right. It was presidential election, I think it was.
Yeah, but it depends on the ground that AV was for permanent. And some of my AV mailers that went out were also returned. So come possibly, I'll look you up and I can tell you where we're at, what we need to do to get you that.
Okay, and the next question, sorry. Where does this, where does this money come from? It doesn't come from our taxes?
Uh, yeah. We would, there is no other, we're not in a situation where a business where we can generate revenue. Our revenue is unfortunately generated from local taxes.
Sure, your property is not home-statted taxes, not home-statted. So if your property has a home stud, it's gonna go on your tax bill.
What is the figure reading that's making you ask the question?
It says that both of our taxpayers will not pay an increased tax rate. My taxes won't go up.
Right.
It'll be the same. It's already replaced.
It's a renewal. Okay, I, I'm just trying to visualize it.
That's what he's here for, is to ask and have a change.
So, so, I already paid my taxes, so.
Right. So it's not gonna be you?
No.
Again, I, you know, the tax climate right now is very challenging, I would say, from my perspective, to try to be able to communicate. And so this is not a new tax. This is, you know, where we're at right now. And, you know, it's something that all schools are challenged to pass. So I, I get where everybody's coming from and, like I said, I'm more than happy to have that conversation if you want to, you know, discuss. And May, May 1st, we will have a walkthrough, you know, at the school. And we haven't put that out yet, but we're gonna walk through the parking lots and the royal rooms and a couple of different things to just try to help visually like see, you know, kind of where we're at. So feel free to, you know, communicate that once that kind of gets passed out. But like I said, I'm a Caledonian Township resident, so I'm a little biased, but I live here. My kids go to the school. You know, we are trying to make it as awesome as we can be and I think we have a neat little school. And we do a lot of good stuff, you know, along the way. We're not perfect, but we, we have a lot of good things in place for our students. So just, yes.
Hypothetically speaking, if it's voted down, what is your plan moving forward?
Right, a situation where I'm feeling like I'm running, you know, type thing. So realistically, the 18 mils is, that will be back in the ballot, obviously. If it's not successful, it will be probably back on the ballot in, in November. And it, it is something that our school system has to continue to try to see, ask. So that's a very fair question and I don't want to get in a situation where I'm trying to shame anybody or trying to persuade them into voting yes or no because I can't tell you how to vote, you know, for my role. But what I'm saying is, I know that we have a past 18 mils regardless, based off of proposal A from 1991, you know, at that point. So it's a very, very fair question that anyone, I'm a little nervous trying to answer because I know it creates potential. So, yes, sir.
I, for one, will present this at the Northern Restaurant. Otherwise, you only have the knowledge. It's a great place to pass information on this long. It's just like a barber shop, you know? There's more people in there.
They should have breakfast down there here at some point soon, so.
It's not so popular personally, but okay. All the useful, as a pig roast at a bar mess. Anyway.
I appreciate that.
Word gets around. Who said it in a positive way and make help someone, they've got someone.
I think that's the key, you know, is just making sure everybody has accurate information, you know, as time goes on. There are two renewals. They're not new taxes. Do you have any question, uh, do you have any questions, I guess?
I guess you kind of, I feel like you skirted the question.
No, yeah, sorry. I don't want to skirt.
Your answer was that it will back on the ballot. But my question is, what's your contingency plan for the possible no?
Uh, we would have, so we have to lay off probably 40 to 60 people. And probably reduce our buildings or do it.
So how long from that last?
That.
That's not something that you can make, basically do a battle.
Again, I don't like to go into darkened area.
Have you considered doing like a video on YouTube that we can share off the school outside?
You know, social media's been more challenging, I would say, recently. And, you know, we get a lot of people that made type creating early, you know, as time moves on. So we kind of go on more less social media. I hate to say that.
I understand that. Is this something we can try to comment on?
We can, yeah, we kind of did that and we don't want to censor people either. Like, you know, like it's a, it's a delicate balance, you know, as you're working right here. But yes, you know, we have got a couple different plans. We do have the Alcoa Review doing our article this week. LP News doing our article next week. The BKB doing a video on it the following week. We have mailings going home to all of our students. And then like this week, we have a mailing going home in the review with a reminder about some basic information this next issue as well. So it's a very structured, like trying to get out the vote message. Again, I can't advocate yes or no. All I can do is just get out the information. So it's, you know, we would, you know, to answer your question, kind of on the back corner, we would be the first school in the state of Michigan since the 90s to not pass 18 mils.
Dan, possibly could you do like a video, a walkthrough and just put it on YouTube where they could?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like I said, I joke, but like people don't really want to hear from me. They want it.
Well, it gives everybody the, because a lot of people have day jobs and they're not going to be able to do the, you know, walkthrough. So for elderly people that can't, aren't mobile phones.
Yeah, they're, yeah, no, 100%, so.
There's gonna be a teacher, somebody to teach them.
I know, yeah. Nobody really wants to be in the face of this.
That'd be a good assignment for public speaking.
Well, and so that was something we talked about actually with the students is, you know, putting them in the, their kind of the crosshairs of this is, is a, yeah, I would say. You know, because you don't want to put, you know, a student like trying to answer questions and things like that. So it's, anytime you get into election issues, it is, it is challenging. I'm not, I know, I, it's, you know, I'm trying to tempt that students into it and they don't quite want it. I don't want to put them in a swab or try to answer questions on things that they don't have.
What I meant was, they're walking through, pointing what everything to do in school and that, and just leaving a class like that, no questions, nothing, just.
It's possible. You know, it's a loud liberty.
These are our values.
She can do anything.
All right, is she a Melman's here?
I would. Yes, I've been through it all and I'm in Melman's now and I was in high school.
You should go be a teacher.
Well, something that, you know, that your group may not know is that we've got a very aggressive grow-your-own-grain right now and liberty is actually hopefully gonna be, that new vaccine will introduce a real college. But we have 21 people that are community members right now that are in a teacher credential certification pathway right now that are funded grant programs. So, you know, we're trying to fund our local people to help them get the credentials. Totally different, or I can go right now, I can go down lots of rentals and, you know, any employment pipeline is tough right now, but we are really, really trying to intentionally support local people and trying to help them become teachers and get them moving forward. So that's. And they.
Stay in our community.
And so, you know, wow, yeah, I can get going on a lot of different holes here, you know, as time goes on. But, you know, our turnover rate has drastically decreased because we've been helping our pipeline with local people that are here and that we can help to coach and try to help them become the best educators that they possibly can be. And the race, right example of that, I'm trying to make those results out. You know, we do have, like I said, 21 people that were paraplans or bus drivers that are now working their way through masters programs, you know, or bachelor's programs and trying to be able to earn their certification. Something that we're actually really proud of. And, you know, we're not trying to recruit people out of metro Detroit and trying to get them to come up here and they'll be here for two or three years and they'll leave. Like we're really trying to focus on growing our community, I guess, locally. So that is a very different issue than, you know, the 18 mils and sinking fund, but things that I'm particularly passionate about and I feel like we've made a lot of good notes on. It's not perfect, but, yeah, it's, it's not moving forward. So, and I, just speaking frankly, I appreciate Caledonia communication pretty much over the last two weeks off and on.
Hey, if you feel great, I call you. You can return my calls and some of you know, like get a response.
You know, whether it be the showers or, you know, trying to coordinate warming stuff, you know, that was one of the first things we tried to do too, is to open up the school. And we're in the middle school. So, you know, we're, it's not my school or anybody else's. It's their community's school. And we've tried to.
Same as at home.
100%, so I appreciate the partnership that we've tried to build, you know, I talk to them, so.
No, no, I just want to say that I appreciate you coming and talking and being human and admitting how it happened.
Yep, and special election stuff, if you're frustrated about that, I fully get it and I would fix it moving forward, but I can't fix it now and that's where we're at. So, you know, like I said, I'm not running away from any, you know, responsibility or anything like that. So if you have frustrations with me, bring it to me, show up the board. Are you mad at me about that? But try to suffer it, we'll just, we'll just, we'll share that back.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody for engaging with you. So it's a good, good thing that we're here.
We forced a talk today. You ready to go home?
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
Parents, help the ordinance that was passed, yeah? They need a real public to assume.
Is the motion to approve the zoning ordinance?
Most support.
So, yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes? Yes, I know?
Yes.
Yes, I saw that? Nice, yeah.
I'll get with them. I'll give you that. Dust control policy is pretty much exactly the same as last year's, other than the date. I sent it to all of you to review. Does anybody have any questions? And then I will entertain a motion to approve our 2025 dust control policy. Motion to the mayor's department to approve the dust control policy for 2025, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
No, it's two, one is Hubbard Lake, and then we have Sam Warren. Twenty-eight hundred is for Sam Warren. So if, if nobody has.
Yeah.
Do two separate motions, okay? So what insurance it costs me for Sam Warren Township for twenty-eight hundred would be more?
Make the motion to approve. Make the motion to approve the contract, fire contract for Sam Warren Township for twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Motion to make and second it all, favor of approving. Here are the fire service contract with Sam Warren Township for twenty-eight hundred.
Aye.
And we have the Hubbard Lake Association, which is forty-two percent of the village block to find a contract. Hubbard Lake Volunteer Fire Department, I must add, I'm a productologist. Um, the contract for fire services with Hubbard Lake Volunteer Fire Department, which is forty percent, forty-two percent of the village of Township, like.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hubbard Lake Volunteer Fire Department contract for twenty twenty-five for a sum of forty-two percent of the village collected by the township.
Awesome.
Motion to make and second it all, aye. Motion, Gary. I'm calling the commissioner, someone are getting Sunday right now. So he won't be here. We have the bills to pay. Um, we've had printer issues, so I apologize. We didn't have them here printed out for you, but we will get them posted online anyway. All of the board has reviewed them. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Just, I was saying to you, sorry.
Anybody have any issues with the dust control? I'm going to say. I would let these two, do we have a motion today?
Oh, that's the dust control, so I was.
Yeah, if I want the.
Yeah, if you want them paid this month, we need to add that in the motion today. So I can just have a second, I need.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and also add in both fire contracts for Hubbard Lake Volunteer Fire Department and Sam Warren Township Fire Department.
Motion to make and second it all, favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion, Gary. Any word comment?
There's something I was thinking about.
Yeah.
Which doesn't have, it's not an emergency right now, I don't think, but I heard that the Hubbard Lake Fire Department had issues with their water. And I'm wondering if we need to talk to the fire chief and maybe the, how Dave at the health department to see if there's room for the fire department to have their own well. And I think it's, uh, dangerous, frankly, if we're going to call them, they come back and they need to get cleaned up and get that off of them. And they don't have water, that's kind of dangerous, really. They don't even need to take that stuff to their own house, too. So.
I will, I will, because it was, I agree with you and I thought about the same thing. There's no reason for the water to be shut off and then not have water for you.
Is that a normal thing or is that a?
Would it be a normal thing for the?
Is it on now?
Off of the wire?
Is it on now?
Yes, they turned it back on after the fire.
Oh, no, I'm talking to Hank, sorry. I'm kind of looking at your, so many of these wasn't turned off, Mark.
Couple, two, three. Isn't that against the law?
Should, ask the chief.
Yeah.
I know, but, you know, we were down there trying to cook and take care of the community and there was no water in the building, so we were using.
So it was during, they.
We were using a tanker truck to give people water to take them to flush their toilets. Um, when we had to cook and do dishes, we had to use gallon jugs of water that we purchased. So it, it was, um, yeah.
I just feel the fire department needs to have control of their own well.
And I don't think it was our issue, but it's going to be, I think, um, but I agree. And I do believe you did have somebody call the older, earlier in the past year. I thought my elder told me that you had, no.
They talked about it.
Yeah, I don't know, but I will talk to my, our fire chief. Um, and I really appreciate everything you guys did, opening up and serving the public. I don't know if I would say that, but.
You guys, they were busy doing other things, okay? I don't want to do their job, they don't want to do mine.
It was wonderful and it was right there in town. Thank you. I know I say it all the time, but I love our fire department. You're a quick bunch. Thank you, very nice. First, was Anthony's idea that we put a generator on our hall?
Good job.
Yes. I've told him that many times.
Yeah, we're only a couple of, like, we've been there for two.
Yeah, they're over there. So is there anything on board? Let's go to the dishes. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to make and second it all, favor? Aye, not this one.
Thank you, everybody that came out. And for Christmas night, we are having a church dinner for everybody in the community that has helped us, that needs it, just wants to come and have fun, they're all home. Let's try the words.